I'd like to call the meeting to order. This is Tuesday, April 12th at 5:00 PM. The study session for town council. May we have a roll call, please?
Yes, you may. Councilmember Kelly.
Present.
Councilmember Turner.
Here.
Councilmember McCafferty.
Here.
Councilmember Armstrong.
Here.
Councilmember Gernill.
Here.
Vice Mayor Perkins.
Here.
Mayor Miller is absent. We also have, um, Town Manager Blackmore is on, um, electronically through Zoom.
Okay. Number two, presentation and discussion by Mark Holmes, Water Consultant regarding the Town of Chino Valley Water Service Area Physical Availability Determination. Frank Marbury. Where's Mark?
He's on, he's on screen.
Hi, I'm Frank and Mark's up there. So, uh, I don't know if he'll be able to see Mark, but he's via Zoom. He's out of town, but, uh, his presentation's here and the PowerPoint's up, so, um, I'll let him take it away, Mark, if you're there.
And here, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Excellent. So I'll, um, I think that Erin's gonna be running the, the presentation and I'll let her queue up the presentation and the slides and I'll just give the, the go ahead to, uh, advance the slide. So the study session, um, presentation for you is, is to describe the purpose and of the presentation, provide an overview and update of, of the, um, 100-year water physical availability determination, or I'll refer to it as a PAD, uh, for the groundwater modeling work for, for the town. If you go to the next slide, please. So the importance and purpose of this project are twofold. Um, the first is the, uh, the project will actually provide the physical availability determination for water supplies that will be reserved for, um, Old Home Manor. Um, it's, it's referred to as an analysis of assured water supply, uh, permit application, which currently has been completed and it's just awaiting this physical availability determination. Um, the second permit application that's waiting for this work to be completed is the town's recovery well permits. Um, this application is for wells that could or would be used, um, and/or required for recovery of our reclaimed water supplies for those developments that require reclaimed water for certificates of assured water supply or other water uses that would require reclaimed water. Um, and then lastly, um, and this has been discussed in previous work sessions that because this physical availability determination is being, uh, completed for the town's entire water service area, there, there would be additional, um, I called it free agent water. There could be some additional water available for, um, those landowners within 660 feet of the town's water service area that could also, uh, take advantage of this, um, this physical water that we determines available and they could lock and reserve that water up for, uh, those land developments in the future. Next slide, please. Um, the town's groundwater model, um, looks at the Prescott Active Management, Active Management Area as a whole and determines its 100-year groundwater availability. But I wanted to highlight underscore, the picture on the left there is, the blue outline is the 450 square mile area of the Prescott Active Management Area with, uh, the city of Prescott in the southern southwest part there and the blue Prescott Valley and green. And it's very difficult to see Chino Valley. All of those red dots are the 13,000 plus wells that are the predominantly are exempt wells, but there are other non-exempt wells or, or exempt wells, but, uh, there are a lot of wells and they even stack on top of each, on top of each other uh, for the 10 acre areas of which their cadastre relocated. Again, 13,000 wells. So there's a lot of competition, uh, within the Prescott Active Management Area, uh, for water. Um, the town's study must prove it will not impact other assured water supply lands um, or wells that include, uh, lands with certificates of assured water supply or designated water provider, uh, wells or lands, and that includes the city of Prescott. Um, and it would also include dry lot subdivisions where a 100-year assured water supply was required. So our study has to ensure that we do not impact, uh, those, uh, certificate right holders or those lands or wells. So, eh, to be quite blunt, it's getting extremely challenging to find, uh, water that's available looking out again at 100 years into the future. Things are getting pretty, uh, tight within the, the aquifer. The other factor that makes this extremely challenging for the town is we have a very limited water service area. Um, and, um, if, if we do expand that water service area in the future, that potentially could open up other lands that could be, um, assessed for additional, uh, future physical availability determinations. But right now we have such a small water service area. Um, there's only so much water that we could actually, uh, look at locking up for this physical availability determination. And one last note I will, will bring up is that the Arizona Department of Water Resources is critically evaluating this model and, and imposing criteria that ensure we take a very, very conservative approach um, so that the water is not over allocated. So whatever we do, um, lock up in this physical determine, this physical availability determination is not going to be, um, over allocated. So they are definitely looking at this, um, very, very strictly. Next slide, please. Just talking about the history of this project and how long it's taken and the budget, um, aspects of it. So in July of 2019, the project started with the initial budget of slightly, just under $50,000, which was very reasonable for a groundwater model of this nature. December of 2019, uh, myself and our consultants Montgomery Associates met with the Arizona Department of Water Resources, what was called a, uh, a pre-application meeting. And at the time, ADWR proposed, uh, actually supported our proposed, um, modeling approaches and, and techniques. In March of 2020, the budget, we had a budget increase of a little over 16,000. Um, ADWR then had requested several, uh, significant modeling adjustments, which we then incorporated. And in July of 2020, we submitted our final hydrologic report and our physical availability termination application to the department. And, uh, several months later in February of 2021, ADWR issued a notice of deficiency, which I'll refer to as a nod. They issued the first, uh, nod to us. Um, ADWR wanted some additional significantly, uh, significant modeling changes, uh, completed to the model. Next slide, please. So in March of 2021, we had a meeting with, uh, the Arizona Department of Water Resources to discuss the deficiencies or their recommendations to make the adjustments to the model. We then had another, uh, budget increase of, uh, a little more than 14,000 to make and accommodate all of those ADWR, uh, required, uh, changes. And in April of 2021, we submitted a response to the ADWR nod one. And in July of 2021, ADWR issued a second notice of deficiency to the town. And in August of 2021, we met with the department again to discuss that notice of deficiency two. Um, we had a budget increase of slightly more than $23,000 to accommodate the ADWR required changes. And then in the course of correspondence with the department, September through December of 2021, ADWR has been providing additional requirements outside of the notice of deficiency two, uh, for the town to make in, include in its model. Next slide, please. So based on the discussions and the requirements that now DWR wants us to make in the model, um, as of April of 2022, um, we understand there's certain modeling cells. This is the principal aquifer. As I mentioned, there is getting to be a critical amount of water in the aquifer. Certain areas within the model are going dry. And so within the model, we actually have to get permission of some land, uh, some landowners that have wells and, and get their approval to actually move some of those demand locations, which is allowed by the Department of Water Resources. We've been working with Prescott Valley and actually have obtained some of, uh, those demand movements. We also have to include now what the department is calling excess groundwater pumping, which looks at, uh, the year 2019 of what was pumped and that amount going forward for 100 years. And as you may recall, 2019 was one of the driest, um, and very hot year on record, which there was a lot of excess pumping. So again, it's the department taking a very conservative stance on, uh, us incorporating this very hot, dry year and having that excess pumping going forward. So we have to make all these adjustments. We have to rerun the model. We have to calibrate it. We have to verify the model meets all of the, uh, notice of deficiency two and the additional ADWR requirements. And then we'll be submitting, um, what we hope will be a final techno, technical memorandum to ADWR with all those required updates. But to order to get there, um, as I'm coming forward with you tonight, that it's going to require some additional money. So we're proposing an optimistic final budget. We hope it's final, uh, increase of $19,000 to complete all the work that the department is requiring us to do. And a $10,000 contingency should ADWR again require something additional that we have to look at. We, we hope it's, it's not going to be that way, but we have to be prepared for that. Next slide, please. So in, uh, in total, the original budget would start out just under 50,000, um, had additional budget increases of a little more than 54. So our total spend to date is 103,990. And our new proposed amount will be, uh, around 29,000, uh, which I think will be issued in, uh, a, a purchase order for the additional work. Next slide, please. Okay, so, um, the next steps going forward, uh, we're going to, uh, submit the updated model data and technical memo to ADWR to address all of notice of deficiency number two and all of the additional requirements outside of the nod to the department is requiring us to make. And once the department does approve this and issue our physical availability determination, then soon thereafter, the town will be, um, awarded its analysis of assured water supply for Old Home Manor that will reserve all the water needed for build out at Old Home Manor. It will also, um, be issuing the recovery well permits for the town so that we can recover reclaimed water credits for any current or future assured water supply, uh, needs. And again, um, any remaining water that's physically available can be offered to those landowners within 660 feet of the town's water service area and, and make that, uh, make that available to them to lock that water up through their own permit application. And just an additional thought is what we originally thought would be somewhere around 4,600 acre feet per year for 100 years is looking more like it's going to be probably closer to 3,000 acre feet every year for 100 years as what will be physically available and determined by the town for our current service, uh, water service area. Um, next slide, please. That concludes my presentation and I would be happy to, uh, address any questions or comments that you have.
Mark, is it, uh, is it typical in a study like this to see this much of, uh, a ramping budget? If I guess that's what you want to call it. It almost has gotten away from being a budget.
Yes, um, I would say that this is a bit unusual. Um, I will just venture that, um, any models going forward from this point on are probably going to have, um, extreme scrutiny looking at, um, how the model is being constructed, taking the conservative approaches, using, um, I would say excess pumping in the aquifer, um, even though it may not be occurring for 100 years and we could be out of drought in 20 years. I don't know, but um, I think budgets for modeling what, you know, I have, I have given a range in the past in some of the discussions with, um, the Water and Utilities Subcommittee and I think to the council that these projects can range from 60 to $90,000. Um, so we've just gone beyond the 90, no doubt. We're at the 103 with an additional, uh, 29, but I think going forward, any work done in the Prescott Active Management Area probably is going to have a modeling budget that's going to be, um, significant, um, and how they're going to be able to address the Department of Water Resources, um, additional concerns regarding, uh, the principal aquifer dewatered in certain areas and ensuring they're not impacting um, other certificate or assured water supply. So again, it's this modeling, it's, it's the only tool the department, um, authorizes for an entity to, um, physically model how much water molecules are under land, whether it's an ownership or a water service area. It's, it's getting really tricky. Um, it's getting extremely challenging and the aquifer is getting allocated. Um, and I think the Department of Water Resources, lastly, I'll just add, the department does not want to have, I think, a situation which happened down in Pinal County, which the aquifer has been over allocated and it's leading to a number of significant issues.
Yeah, thank you.
So, and if I could jump into, I recently spoke to one of the developers in town that just got their certificate of assured water supply. And they had a very similar experience to this. Three or four kickbacks from the department. And he even volunteered that the, the dollar amount was similar to what we're spending. So it's not unique to the town, but I think it's becoming more the standard operating procedure for ADWR to kick it back this much. And he was using a different consultant than us, so it's not specific to our consultant. I think it's just with all the turnover at ADWR, that's what we're seeing right now. And, and with the the need, their vision of being so conservative and wanting to to be conservative and not run out of water is, I think, what we're seeing here.
Yeah, I know. It kind of seems like they're running scared and don't want to obligate themselves to anything, so.
And we're paying the price.
Yeah.
So, and I, and I'll just add, the original contract was signed by Cecilia when she was town manager. So Cindy will process this change, but she wanted us to bring it to, to council to, to let you guys know what was going on and keep the transparency and keep you in the loop of this.
Much appreciated.
On this possible available water within 660 feet, do we recoup any funds by selling that water or is it a giveaway or what happens?
Uh, we, uh, Mark, I don't know if you want to jump in here. Most of the water we're looking for is for Old Home Manor and some of the extra, it would help. I guess maybe other people that want to use it in our service area to develop. They wouldn't have to go through this year-long, multi-year-long expensive process. They could just use this study for that component of their assured water supply. So it would.
Yeah, and, um, just to add, just to add on to that, that was, um, we were looking at, um, two aspects. Number one is, um, we, uh, we developed, um, kind of an application process where applicants would have, um, basically, um, the ability to lock the water up and, um, and well, the approach was to try and really focus on the infill development where we do have water and, and sewer. Um, so the goal is to really get the water infill. And, and to Frank's point, you see how long it's, it's taken us to get a model done. Um, could you imagine, you know, a, a small, let's just say it's a, a 40-acre project that we all want to, to occur and they're going through, um, a year to a year and a half process to get the physical availability. This, this just eliminates that whole modeling aspect. We'll get a, basically a piece of this, 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 this physical availability determination will be like a spreadsheet where we can then allocate to those landowners that volume. It's, it's not really, um, a sale of water, so to speak. It's just basically saying we've determined how much water is physically available under our, our, kind of our, our jurisdiction. They can have access to it, but they're going to be a water customer. They're going to actually connect on to and, and avoid having to go through a year and a half process, which could delay or maybe even scuttle a project that's, uh, valuable to the community.
Okay, thank you.
Right. And the, the other aspect to this is it's the first come, first served. So we're first in line right now, but there's plenty of other agencies and developers behind us. So if we stop this and start it over, not only would we lose the money invested, but you would lose your, your place in line. So when you redid your study to apply for it, you would have to not only look at what you're looking at now, but the other ones that have completed the process and you would not be allowed to impact them. So, um, the water's getting less and less available. So.
No, it's definitely a very important part of what we're doing here in the town and we don't really have an option, I guess, of how much we pay for it.
No. Just, just to Frank's point, if I could add one more to Frank's point, um, the city of Prescott's in the process of becoming re-designated. And they were told by the Department of Water Resources because our analysis of assured water supply application is basically complete and correct. And just waiting on this PAD, this PAD application, Prescott actually had to, um, incorporate the entire volume of Old Home Manor and not impact it. So to Frank's point, we're already ahead of the line for most others and Prescott had to take in consideration Old Home Manor ahead of their re-designation. So this is a very, very valuable, um, an, analysis and, and work. So, um, to, to Frank's point, I just want to point out that we are, we are way ahead of line right now and, and it's already, uh, got tracks with others that are trying to make progress.
Alright.
I have one question for Mark. It's very general. Um, Mark, for those, um, at home, uh, watching via Facebook, could you give us like a 20-second rundown of how you've been involved with Chino Valley and our water service, please?
Sure. So I am a professional registered geologist in the state of Arizona since 2009. Um, I would, I was Chino Valley's Water Resource Director from 2005 to 2010. But I was also, um, City of Mesa's Water Advisor, um, also the city of Goodyear. So large, medium and small communities. I've been in a hydrogeologist, um, in the state of Arizona for 22 years. Uh, but have fallen in love with, of course, Chino Valley, the area here. Um, I live here. Um, so I've been involved in water and understand the, the political nature, the, the history, the laws and, um, love to be engaged and, uh, again, help Chino Valley, um, get the, uh, the, the things it needs regarding water resources and move forward with some of these big challenges.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Alright, thank you.
Everyone's good?
Yep.
Alright. We will move on to discussion regarding proposed staff policy to clarify town road classifications and cross-sections. Frank Marbury, Public Works Director. Hi Frank.
Hi. Alright. So this one, we just wanted to bring it to you. A little bit of history. Yeah, I think we can work with that. You want me to?
Lon, do you have color?
Okay. Back in 2020, as part of the subdivision regulation rewrites, if you remember, those of you that were here, uh, the, the term or the, the section for rural arterial roads wa- was brought into the subdivision regulations. At that time, the intent was to include the, the roadways outside of the urban areas where typically you have zoning, uh, greater than one acre is what we're looking, was, was the original intent of the rural areas to get the country roads with the ditches, that sort of thing. But the trick was in the subdivision regulations, it didn't declare exactly where we were wanting those rural roads, which ones were urban, which ones are rural and where is that decided? So hopefully this will help, um, myself, a large part of the planning department, uh, development services and even town manager weighed in on it. So, um, what we've got here is sort of a policy we're looking at. I'll go over the urban sections real quick. What we're proposing, there, there's very few roads we're looking at. I'm sorry, do we need?
My apologies. I'm trying to be low-key, but a few of us only have black and white copies, so we're not able to follow.
Oh, okay. I'll have a color slide here in just a second, if that helps.
Thank you.
Um, apologize for that. So, um, really the only roads in town designated to be four lanes or more is the future Great Western Connector out on the east side of town. And we don't know if that will be built in our lifetimes. So what we're proposing for urban sections is basically urban means curb and gutter. And we'll be looking at, uh, three-lane roads. So it's two lanes with a center turn lane. Uh, on the higher travel roads, you'd be looking at a 10-foot sidewalk on one side. That's a multi-use path to get the bicycles off of the road. Uh, predominantly that would be um, Perkinsville Road and Two North, those types of roads. And the lower traveled roads on urban streets would have five-foot bike lanes and just five-foot sidewalks. So that's the urban curb and gutter. For the rural section, we would stick to two-lane roads, about 12-foot lanes. We would add a five-foot paved shoulder to kind of protect the edge of the road and give someone space to walk if they're walking or, uh, cars to pull over, that sort of thing. And then you'd have your ditches. Some areas of town, as we'll show in the next slide on the map, we're proposing a 10-foot trail off to one side. And we're, we're looking at that being unpaved, either gravel or even, even dirt was talked about in the road committee, place for bicycles and pedestrians and even horses on the more rural side. So, um, both of these sections, all of these sections are 80-foot right-of-way. So the map here, and this one's in color, if you can see. Um, and we'll try to provide you color maps to comment on in the future.
Well, if there's a colored legend.
Yeah, the, uh, the yellow roads are, um, the sections one and two, the urban curb and gutter sections. Not sure if that's yellow or orange with my eyes, but, um, so you can see they follow mostly along Highway 89 and that almost follows the general plan when you think of that commercial corridor for the general plan. So most of the high-density commercial areas are the, are the urban roads. We do have an urban road going out to north towards Bright Star through the high-density neighborhoods of Chino Valley and Bright Star. Another one on Center Street, um, as you go by the high school and go out to the south side of all the Chino Meadows filings. And that could eventually be Bright Star if it ever builds out. Bright Star property does go all the way down to Center Street. The sort of checkered lines next to the roadways indicate the trails and, and multi-use pathways. So where you see it along the yellow, that, those are intended right now to eventually be paved sidewalks. And then the, uh, ones along the blue rural would be unpaved. So all the blue ones are the two-lane rural roads that you see. If they've got that dotted line next to it, that's a trail off behind one of the ditches. Um, we do have a few of these green roads that are labeled special sections. Those are kind of unique ones that we haven't come up with a certain design for. It'll probably be an individual design for each road once the plans go in. Uh, Four North is a big example, leading out to the business park. We'll probably wait for a very specific design for that road based on the engineering studies that come out when we, we try to straighten out that road and get it geared for the truck traffic. Um, and then the One West special sections are ones that are already built out, like the One West between Del Rio School and, and the library already has a pathway on it. So that's kind of the example we're looking at for that rural pathway. And a lot of people use that to walk on. And then north through the Appaloosa neighborhoods, we were, it's already paved with curb and gutter on one side and no curb and gutter on the other. So it's kind of special, but we do propose at some point in the future, if we ever get funds available, putting some sort of sidewalk or pathway along that road as well to get folks off of the pavement of One West. And so, um, what staff would be looking for here is basically just to maybe take this home, look at it and, uh, let us know if you have any, just contact my office or, or Lori or, or any of us and let us know if you have any comments or suggestions. Um, I will say this was presented to the road committee yesterday. And, um, the discussion was also had, well, what about when the town repaves the road? Should we build it to this standard? And, and that's a hard question to answer because you can take the budget we've got now, which is almost doubled from last year's estimates because of all the high oil prices and everything else. And if you add curb and gutter and sidewalk, you're doubling it again. So one of the proposals that was, strategies that was talked about was, well, let's build, say, the two-lane road we got now, just replace what we got, but build it in the middle and design it so that we could add, say, a lane or a half a lane on each side. And those curb and gutters get enough room to get those to go in in the future when the town has more money. Kind of design it for the whole section, but only build the two lanes like we have right now. It's not perfect. You know, if I had my choice, I'd come to you and say, we need to build all these roads now and get it looking right, but we know that's not a budget reality. So when new developments come in and increase the traffic and demands, we plan to hold them to these standards. For example, the development across from the pool area that already has this standard designed into it for their half of the roadway. So that'll be the first multi-use path you see. Any questions or comments, suggestions?
I just want to make sure I'm understanding this clearly. So Road 1 North on the east side is rural, even though it's going into a subdivision? Can you help me with that?
Sure. And that was one we actually discussed a good bit. And that one could change, that could be a suggestion. But right now, what we're looking at is, once you get past Dany Bee's off the highway, there's houses on the north side and the CVID property on the south, and City of Prescott owns property there, too. So that's his own AR5, so we figure that's fairly rural, and the road going into Highlands Ranch is already built out. Highlands Ranch built that when they built it out without any curb and gutter. And those trees, they've got trees lining the road with no curb and gutter. So we figured the chance of that going into an urban section, even though it's going into higher density with bike lanes and curb and gutter, would probably be one of the lowest priorities if we did that. So we figured it'd probably stay rural for a long time, since it's already built.
Lon? Any questions?
Well, not really. I was at the Roads and Streets Committee meeting. And, you know, just a big part of it that came out of that for me was, it's okay to want all this,
Right.
but paying for it's a different ballgame.
Right.
So like Frank was saying, when, if you're going to go in and you're going to build your three-lane road that is planning on being three lanes down the road and put your curb and gutter in and everything, you're not going to go very far. And so the idea that, let's, you know, and then there was thought of, okay, can we build the road out and do the curb and gutter later? Frank brought up why that doesn't work, because typically you put your curb and gutter in, take your asphalt to it, so that everything is true. So that's where the idea came of, let's build the center of the road and then down, and get more roadwork done. And then, in the future, go back in when it's necessary and add a half a lane on both sides, put your curb and gutter in, add that half a lane on each side and complete your road. And that may be a way for us to make our money go further and get more done.
I'm sorry to interrupt you.
Oh, no, that's, I'm all done. He has a way of saying it much better than me.
Do you guys have questions?
All right. So, so thank you for that. And like I said, we'll be working on this. And the other quick thing is, when the general plan update comes in, this will probably be incorporated into that and then tweaked and modified through the committee process with that. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Vice Mayor Perkins, we will print out colored copies for all council members and put them in your boxes tonight.
Thank you. I was, I can't read. Okay, well, I believe... Oh, Cindy? Discussion regarding the possible upcoming 2022 Fourth of July celebration. Cindy Thomas, Community Services Manager.
Good evening, Vice Mayor and Council. I want to give you an update on our upcoming Fourth of July festivities, along with territorial days. They kind of go hand-in-hand possibly this year. So with Fourth of July, let me get to, there we go. With Fourth of July, we've had some challenges in the past and currently. Our, last week I had a phone call from our current fireworks vendor, the same one we've used for years. He was calling to inform me that we will not, he will not be able to provide the fireworks for us this year. He's having difficulty with even getting any product delivered to fulfill other accounts also. They'll be focusing on accounts in his area, which is the Phoenix area, rather than up here. And even with those accounts, he's concerned about not getting the product in for them either. We are still in drought conditions, and it appears we will see another very dry spring and summer. So this is what I am proposing. As in years past, we will continue to offer free swimming and hot dogs to the community at the Aquatic Center. This would be from 10:30 a.m. to 5:30 p.m. on the Fourth of July. And we'd also like to show some sort of regional support and cooperation to Prescott and possibly Prescott Valley. I've talked with Prescott's Recreation Director, Joe Baines, for some possible suggestions as to how we could make that possible and support them. We've come across a couple of ideas, but it's still pretty much in our infancy stage at this point. We've also tossed around the idea to hold a non-fireworks event on the Fourth, as we did a few years ago. But feedback we received after that event was overwhelming, that people wanted to see fireworks. So instead of holding people back, we are proposing not to hold any type of event on the Fourth besides the free swim day, and to move our already budgeted resources to territorial days. Focusing on territorial days will allow us to grow this into our signature event. Most municipalities have some sort of signature event, and since territorial days is specific to us, it just makes sense. We are proposing making it a two-day event. We are talking with Prescott to rent their portable stage for Friday and Saturday. On Friday night, we would have live and maybe some recorded music with a dance and a beer garden. Saturday would be our normal territorial day celebration, but on steroids. We'd start with a pancake breakfast, with the pancake breakfast, the 5K run, the parade, the vendors in the park, and then move into our regular activities. What we would be adding is to make it more of a fair-like atmosphere, similar to what Spring Fest was, for those of you that may remember our past Spring Fest. We're looking to have a fair swill, have community groups offer food rather than food trucks, a pie eating and baking contest, possibly a chili cook-off, cotton candy, et cetera. And I think the thing I'm most excited about is still having the stage for Saturday. We will be able to showcase our homegrown talent. The categories we'd like to see on stage would be an open mic, amateur hour, comedy hour, and a time slot dedicated to the schools for bands, choirs, et cetera, maybe even possibly a talent show. The possibilities are endless, having the use of the stage. We would end the day's events by 3:00 p.m., so everyone can go home, get cleaned up, and end our territorial days at the corn dinner, our annual corn dinner. Now, I realize this is a lot to digest in a short amount of time, but with that, I'd like to answer any questions you may have.
Fireworks?
So that is a discussion we can have. It is an option. We just haven't pursued it. We'd like some further direction on that, for sure.
What was that you said?
I said fireworks, because we have canceled in the past and we have...
And you are meaning on territorial, am I correct?
Yes, for territorial days, if we can roll those over.
Okay.
I know fireworks aren't that big of a deal, but since we've canceled a few years in a row, I don't want to lose the money. And at the same time, I want the community to have the same celebration that, if we're moving to a signature event, I'd like that to be incorporated. I might be the only person, but I'm just speaking for myself.
It's definitely an option we can explore.
Well, one that's been a big one for me, for a lot of years. And if we are going to make this our signature event, I would really like to see us pursue a permit with ADOT so that we can have our parade down the center of town on the highway.
Okay.
We have a four-lane road now. I don't see any reason why we can't use half of it and still keep two lanes open for traffic going through.
You bet.
I'm not laughing at you, I'm laughing at the faces.
Couldn't we actually, isn't that the whole purpose of arterial road? For that one time, they could go around, you know, one west, one east?
It's just a matter of ADOT.
We have actually talked about it in the past. I'm sure that you've been involved in meetings also, but we've looked at different routes and everything else that could happen to make that happen, even using a smaller portion of the highway, and then still being able to end at Memory Park by doing it that way, so.
All right, thanks.
Absolutely.
Anything else?
All right.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. With that, we are adjourned. See you guys at 5:55.
Okay.
I mean, does anybody have any comments, questions? Should I have asked that first? Do I need a motion?
No, but we're already adjourned, so no more discussion.
Pardon me?
We're already adjourned, so we're good. Just no more discussion, because we are adjourned.
Yes.
Thanks.
Oh, about being adjourned. Okay. Good evening, everyone. This is the regular meeting for Thursday, April 12th of Town Council. Can we please have a roll call? No, I'm sorry, Pledge of Allegiance, how about that?
Okay.
The United States of America in a republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we can try this again, maybe a roll call, please.
Yes, Councilmember Kelly.
Present.
Councilmember Armstrong.
Here.
Councilmember Turner.
Here.
Councilmember Gernio.
Here.
Councilmember McCafferty.
Here.
Vice Mayor Perkins.
Here.
Mayor Miller is absent. Our attorney, Andrew McGuire, is present remotely. As is our town manager, City Blackmore.
Okay, two introductions, presentations, and proclamations. A presentation of proclamation declaring April 2022 as Fair Housing Month. That is on me. Okay, proclamation, Fair Housing Month, April 2022. Whereas the Civil Rights Act of 1968, commonly known as the Federal Fair Housing Act, and the Fair Housing Amendments Act of 1988 prohibit discrimination in the sale, rental, leasing, and financing of housing or land to be used for the construction of housing or in provision of brokerage services on the basis of race, color, religion, sex, disability, familiar status, or natural origin. Whereas the 1968 and 1988 Federal Fair Housing Acts declare that it is a national policy to ensure equal opportunities in housing. And whereas April has traditionally been designated as Fair Housing Month in the United States, now therefore I, Annie Perkins, Vice Mayor, on behalf of Jack Miller, Mayor of the Town of Chino Valley, do hereby proclaim April as Fair Housing Month in Chino Valley and do hereby urge all citizens of this community to comply with the letter and spirit of the fair housing law. In witness whereof, I have hereunto set my hand and cause the seal of the Town of Chino Valley to be affixed to this 12th day of April 2022.
And as you know, we are seeking funding from the CDBG. We are seeking funding from the CDBG for the Senior Center renovation project. And that money comes from housing and urban development. And part of that is to promote and recognize Fair Housing Month. So we thank you for taking this time to do this. And we look forward to receiving the final word on the funding for the Senior Center renovation.
Thank you so much. Okay, moving to 2B, presentation by Leslie Hoffman, Yavapai County Recorder. And Lynn Constable, Yavapai County Elections Director, on redistricting.
Am I on? Yay. Okay, we just wanted to come and give you a redistricting update. This, I'm Lincoln Stobley, I'm the Yavapai County Elections Director, and this is Leslie Hoffman, Yavapai County Recorder. And basically, we wanted to tell you what happened at the Independent Redistricting Committee. Basically, the committee draws the lines for all the congressional, the US Congress, and the state legislative districts. They released those lines for the state on January 24th. And for the congressional districts, all of Yavapai County is in Congressional District 2 now. So when you're voting for your congressman, your US congressman, we used to be one, one and four actually, and now we're number two. But the whole county is in District 2. I know. Yes, yep, yep, Sedona is also in there.
An advantage to that is ballot styles and splits, you know, we have all those splits, different ballot styles. This just reduces those savings on styles, time, efficiency, it really helps.
And then for the legislative districts, it looks like we're all in Legislative District 1, but if you look way down here where Wickenburg is, they carved out a little tiny piece of Wickenburg and they put that in District 30. So everything else is in 1, including Sedona, both in Yavapai and in Coconino is in 1. You'll see up here, way up here, this is the Sedona area and it kind of jogs over. The line comes straight down for the county, but the town boundary goes over into Coconino. So they took that into number 1. So that means that we needed three new precincts in the Wickenburg area to conform to 16411. Basically, a precinct can only be in one legislative district. So, and we had to have three of them because the area that they carved out here, all of this area was contiguous, but this little piece here and this little piece down here was not. So we made three new precincts out of the Wick precinct that used to be down there. And we brought those to the Board of Supervisors on the 16th of February and they approved those. So the new precincts, I think I have a better picture. This big one is going to be called Wick. The area that's in white up above is going to be called Lasso. And then we have Chaps and Spurs.
Because Wickenburg is the roping capital of the world.
Yep.
Thought that was appropriate.
Tried to pick some good names. And I don't want you to think that this was a gerrymandered district. So I wanted to show you that the Town of Wickenburg goes into Maricopa County and the town actually comes up in these areas of Yavapai County. So basically, all of this underneath the county line here is in District 30 and the parts of Wickenburg that are in Yavapai County. I'm gonna let Leslie do this one.
Okay. Okay. There's several steps to the redistricting once we've got everything. And this year, of course, because of COVID, the census being delayed, then all of the lines were delayed, which have caused a lot of, a lot of challenges in just our processes and doing everything. But this is still the basic rules for when we do our redistricting. Excuse me, after the Board of Supervisors, Rick Brown's back there, one of our supervisors, after they approve the new precincts, then it goes to our GIS department and they create the new precinct splits and our shape files. And actually, our GIS department in Yavapai County is so sophisticated, they helped many counties around the state do theirs. Especially your smaller counties that don't have robust departments like we do. They've been great, and even at the state, they help at the state level. Then it goes to our Public Works Department, goes to our surveyors, because legal descriptions have to be drawn for every one of those districts. After that's done, then we get the map layers, we get the new districts, and it comes to voter registration. And that's my side of the house, is the voter registration, early voting, and the, and the vote by mail comes all through my department. Lynn does, she takes care of doing all the redistricting parts. Realigning, drawing everything, and working with IRC much more than I do. This is where it comes to the reporter's office. And so we have to be sure that all of our voters fall within the correct precincts, the right splits, so that they get the right ballots. That's the main objective, is getting everybody the correct ballot styles. In the August, last presidential August election, we had 800, 900 ballot styles. Because there's so many special districts and cities and towns and, yeah, water districts, fire districts, so there's a lot of different school districts. So it's very important to get everybody in their correct district and their correct precincts so that they get the ballot style that they need to be voting on.
Yeah, for example, Leslie and I both live in Chino Valley.
Right.
But I live in the town, and she doesn't. So I get to vote for all of you, and she doesn't.
We have completely different ballots.
Yeah.
And we live literally four minutes apart. So it can be, you can live on So, it can be, you can live on one side of the street and get a certain ballot, and the person on the other side of the street may get a different one, because that's where that district line goes. So, we make all those necessary changes. We disassociate with all your old districts and reassign new ones. So, everybody's going to be getting a new voter registration card about the first part of May. We'll be sending one, because your districts are going to change, congressional legislative, so you'll get new cards, so that you know what correct district that you're in. Throw away the old one. Yes, please. Throw away the old one, keep your new one. And then, once they're implemented, then everything is uploaded to the new shape file, so you'll be able to go onto our website and see what districts you fall in. So, I pretty much said everything on there without reading it. You know, we go through, once we change everybody over, then we go back, we double check, make sure that someone wasn't put in a district that shouldn't have been. So, there's a check and an audit that we go through to make sure that everybody is where they need to be. And then, we do it through a testing environment, then we put it through a production environment, then once it goes live, we go through, we gotta finish up. We just finished up our elections we've got going, got everything in line, and then you'll get your new voter ID card. Like I say, about the first of May. You're gonna also be getting your 90-day notices, going a little off base, but you're gonna be getting two mailers from us. So, be sure and watch them both, especially for any independent voters, it will let you know that you need to notify us on the type of ballot that you want for the August election. So, you'll get a 90-day notice, which is a statutory requirement, and then you'll all get your ID cards as well.
Okay, and then, we also talked about the supervisor districts, because every 10 years, we look at the population for the supervisor districts and see if we need to redistrict those. And we're actually supposed to do that by December 1st, but because the lines and the census came out so late, there was session law last year that gave us a delay and an extension till July 1st to do that. But we've actually already looked at those. And this is the population of the five districts and the percentage of population, and even though some of the districts grew quite a bit, it was the districts that needed to grow. So, they're pretty even by population, and they need to be within, I think I said it on the other slide, within 10%. So, we made no changes to the supervisor districts. So, you're stuck with Craig Brown.
Yeah, that's right.
Yep, they're the biggest. Okay, and that's it. Questions?
Just curious, who became District 1?
Who became?
For US, we were 1. Wasn't this area number 1 forever?
Well, legislative is still 1.
Yeah.
Legislative is still 1.
We're still 1.
Yeah, Congressional, yeah, Congressional is not 1 anymore.
It's 2 and 30.
Well, no, Congressional is 2.
2.
Yeah. Yeah, District 1 for Congressional is down here in the Phoenix area.
The legislative district by law, because we had the first capital.
Right, that's why I was 1.
Yeah, yeah.
And we had to remind IRC of that.
Yes, we did. Yeah, they were, they kept naming us number 5, and I'm like, no, no, we're number 1.
Because Arizona, we gained a seat, did we not?
We did not.
In the US House?
We did not.
I thought we did.
No, we were very close, but we did not.
I have a quick question. With these changes, will we, voters within Yavapai County still be able to vote at all the different voted locations?
Yes, yes. We still have vote centers, and we're actually gonna do, we usually do a urban center here and a supercenter, but we're gonna make them both supercenters for this next election. So, we'll be able to serve more voters in Chino Valley.
Not a question, but we were fortunate enough to have these two young ladies come out and speak to our local vet group. I'd like to thank them again for that.
You're welcome. Very welcome. And we also brought some other information that I gave to Erin to pass out. It's just, it's general information on voter registration, what we do, ballots, it's just, and on your important date coming up for the next two elections. So, I just brought it, so she can hand it out to you for fine reading if you can't sleep tonight.
Thank you so much.
The midterms are coming up. Please vote.
Thank you.
If you have questions, we're always available.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, these are color papers. Thank you so much. Okay. Now, we have 2C, introduction and presentation of Town of Chino Valley, new employee hires. Laura, Kay?
Good evening, Vice Mayor and Council. Oh, you already put it up for me. Thank you so much. So, since October 18th of 2021, we've hired and onboarded 16 new team members to the Town of Chino Valley, one town, one team. So, we've been busy. Great hires. We've had seven in the Public Works Department, five in police, one in the town manager's office, one in community services, one in development services, and one in the finance department. There was actually one that was hired today, Mario Figueroa. I don't have him on the PowerPoint, but I will be sure to add him to the next one. But he is part of the Public Works Department in our Facilities Department, and he's a maintenance worker. So, we'll start with the, I put him in order of hire. So, starting on October 18th, Jesse Holyfield joined the Utilities Division as an operations specialist. Kasia Rivera is a civilian officer in the Police Department who hired on with us on October 25th. Ms. Terry Denimy is here. Would you like to speak? Assistant to the Town Manager. Amazing hire, I have to say. All of them are. Date of hire was November 1st in the Town Manager's Office. Eric Moritz is a maintenance mechanic in our Utilities Division. He also came on on November 1st. Carl Warfel, he is a senior facilities and maintenance worker in our Facilities Department. Lisa Martin is a property and evidence technician with the Police Department. She came on on December 6th. Todd Cupp, he is actually in NARDA training. He is a cadet right now, and hopefully set to graduate soon. He came onboard on December 13th. Diane Enriquez is also a police cadet with the Police Department. She onboarded on the same day, December 13th. And then, we have Paul Quintana. He was with the LA Police Department. He's a police officer. He's been a great hire for us, started with us on December 13th in the Police Department. Scott Balk, Engineering Project Manager in our Engineering Department, came onboard January 3rd. Kyle Smith is a Parks Maintenance Worker in our Parks Department, came on on February 22nd. Becky Butero, she actually transferred over from the pool into our, as an assistant cook, into the Senior Center. So, she's been with our Community Services Department for quite some time. First as a temporary, and then came on as a regular employee on March 7th. Tricia Kelsey is an accountant in our Finance Department, started with us on March 21st. James Rios came on on April 1st, April Fool's Day, in the Roads Department as a maintenance worker. No joke. Mike Loycel is a building inspector. He came from PV, actually. He's a building inspector with us. Started on April 4th, and like I said, Mario Figueroa is with our Facilities Department. He actually started today. We onboarded him this afternoon, so. So, yeah, you'll get to meet him or see a picture of him the next go-around. So, thanks for your time.
It's a lot of folks.
All right. We are gonna, oh, I'm sorry. I just specked myself at the microphone. We're gonna move on to current events summaries and reports. This item is for information only.
Vice Mayor, I'm sorry. Call to the public is first.
I just skipped a page. Let's go to 3, Call to the Public. Individuals requesting to speak, please complete a speaker comment card and return to the clerk. Call to the public is an opportunity for the public to address the council on any issue within the jurisdiction of the council that is not on the agenda. Public comment is encouraged. Individuals are limited to speak for three minutes. The total time for call to the public may be limited, may be up to 30 minutes per meeting. Council action taken as a result of public comment will be limited to directing staff to study the matter, scheduling the matter for further consideration and decision at a later date, or responding to criticism. Is there anyone for Call to the Public?
We did not receive any comment cards, unless anyone wants to come up.
Going once, going twice, seeing none, we're gonna close Call to the Public. And now, we're gonna move on to current events summaries and reports. This item is for information only. The mayor, any council member, or town manager may present a brief summary or report of current events. If listed below, there may also be a presentation on information requested by the mayor and council, and questions may be answered. No action will be taken. 4A, Status Reports by Mayor and Council Regarding Current Events. Gentlemen?
I got a couple. I attended the Go Fly Your Kite, or I'm sorry, whatever it was called. I look at that, because I've been told to go fly a kite a lot. But it was a good thing put on by the Parks and Rec Department and the Parks and Rec Committee that was a part of that, a great big part of that. Real good turnout for the kids. Why not? We got wind, we might as well have kites. Also, the same day, attended the reopening of the Water Can over on Butterfield. She's expanded a lot, you simply along that line. It's a good place to go shopping locally and increase her business.
Awesome. Okay, I have two things. Forgive me, I did not bring my glasses, so just bear with me. Sunday, April 24th, I wanted to let everyone know, because we won't be back here before then, is the annual firefighter angel pancake breakfast. The one here in Chino is at the fire station off of 3 North. It's a great fundraiser. Every year, firefighters cook up pancakes, we eat them, and that money helps out the community. So, that is one, April 24th, from 8 to noon. And then, I also have, I'm going to read this straight from Yavapai County Sheriff's Office, because they said it better than I could. Yavapai County Sheriff's Office would like to recognize the men and women who serve as our public safety telecommunications. They work tirelessly behind the scenes answering nearly 200,000 911 and non-emergency calls a year, whilst simultaneously transmitting crucial information to emergency personnel in the field 24 hours a day, 7 days a week. In recognition of National Telecommunicators Week, please join us in thanking our public safety telecommunications for their hard work and dedication to the safety of our community and emergency personnel. And I wanted to put that out there, because for Chino Valley, I don't know if everybody knows, but you call 911 and it doesn't come to Chino, it goes to Yavapai County, and then is rerouted. So, thanks from here, us here in Chino, and my family has had some dispatchers, that's what we used to call them, is dispatchers, and other telecommunications. So, anyways, thank you to everyone that answers that call. Okay. Cindy, are you there? Do you have anything?
Nothing for me, Vice Mayor.
Okay. Safe travels.
Thank you.
Now, the fun stuff. Consent Agenda. All those items listed below are considered to be routine and may be enacted by one motion. Any council member may request to remove an item from the consent agenda to be considered and discussed separately. Would anybody like to remove anything? Okay, I will entertain a motion.
Make a motion, make a motion that we accept consent agenda items A, B, and C.
Second.
Motion is second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, motion passes. Six action items. The council may vote to recess a public meeting and hold an executive session on any item on this agenda pursuant to ARS 38-431.03A3 for the purpose of discussion or consultation for legal advice with the town attorney. Executive sessions are not open to the public, and no action may be taken in executive session. Erin's presentation.
Good evening, Vice Mayor and Councilmembers. Applicant Keith Knock, who is in attendance this evening, has applied with the state for a new Series 6 bar liquor license at the location of 18 Highway 89, Chino Valley, also known as Log Cabin. The police and planning departments have reviewed the application and recommended approval with no comments. Staff posted the establishment with the necessary notices to meet the required 20-day period from March 21st through April 12th. As of today, staff has not received any written arguments in favor of or in opposition to the application. Upon reviewing the material provided by the Department of Liquor License and Control and conducting a public hearing, the council may recommend to the state liquor board, grant or deny the license, or vote to make no recommendation.
Thank you. And at this point, I will open it up for public hearing. Would anybody like to speak on this? Going once. Okay, seeing none, comments from council. None. Any over there? You guys are making it too easy on me today. Okay, seeing none, I will close the public hearing and ask for a motion.
Okay, make a recommendation to accept the recommended approval for a new Series 6 liquor license for the Log Cabin.
Second.
Motion and second. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Well, that was easy. Now, Will.
Yeah, sorry, I'm gonna change it up.
No, that's, that's okay. That's okay. B, Public Hearing and Consideration and Possible Action to Approve Ordinance 2022-916, Text Amendment T-2022-01, and Create Two New Zoning Districts SR-12,000 and SR-24,000. Lori Lineberry deferred to Will.
Perfect. Good evening, Vice Mayor and members of the council. As read the item before you, is a request to amend the Unified Development Ordinance in order to create two new zoning districts. To just outline the process to date, this item has gone before the Planning and Zoning Commission three times, the first initially in November of 2021, and then it concluded in planning and zoning with a public hearing on February 1st, 2022. It then went to Town Council as a study session item on February 22nd, 2022. To recap the districts themselves, one district is a 12,000 square foot lot, minimum lot area, and the other is a 24,000 square foot lot, minimum lot area. The 12,000 square foot lot has a minimum lot frontage of 80 feet and a maximum lot coverage of 35 feet, while the 24,000 square foot lot has a minimum frontage of 100 feet and a maximum lot coverage of 40%. Now, nothing fundamentally has changed with these since the last time you saw it during the study session. The only thing that has changed is the prefix. Previously, it was SR, like our other zoning districts, but now it is represented as SF. Staff felt it necessary to distinguish between those lots greater than one acre and those lots less than one acre. Single, or SF will still stand for single-family residential, however, it also doubles as square footage. Within the study session, when this item was presented, there were some concerns brought up of the minimum lot frontage, so staff did create a table here outlining, excuse me, the existing zoning districts and their respective characteristics, along with the new proposed districts of the 24,000 and the 12,000 square feet. As you can see, the 24,000 has the 100 square foot, or excuse me, 100 linear feet frontage, similar to the SR1 through SR2.5 district, and then the SF12,000 has an 80 linear foot lot frontage that kind of falls in between the 24,000 and the retired SR0.16 lot frontage. With that being said, stat, or the Planning and Zoning Commission is forwarding a recommendation of approval to Town Council to adopt Ordinance 2021-916. And with that, I will open it up to questions or discussion from the council.
Gentlemen?
Nothing here. We've been over all of it.
Yeah, we've been for a while.
Can you go back to that chart?
Yeah.
To back. Thank you. At what threshold, under or over, before we require them to go to the next level of the zoning? So, like I say, I have a lot, it just, for whatever reason, turns out to be 15,000 square feet.
Okay.
Will I still fall under the SF12,000, because it's under the SF24?
Correct, yes.
Is there a threshold number, percentage?
That 12,000 is that threshold. So, anything, that's the minimum lot frontage, or sorry, the lot square footage. So, anything over that, you can encapsule within that SF12,000. But once you breach that 24,000, you would have to essentially go up in zoning district.
So, is there any room for variance? Should someone have an 11.5 lot?
No, not at this point.
I got one question. Quick question, Will, I'm gonna go back to square one. What's the demand for this? Where did this idea come from? Where did this idea come from?
Uh, it comes out of the General Plan. So whenever the General Plan was adopted in 2014, it specifically called out for the adoption of districts in between the zero-point-one-six district and the one-acre district. And it specifically calls out quarter acre, half acre, three-quarter acre. So staff approached this with the Planning and Zoning Commission to get their taste on what they would like to see, and came out with the twelve thousand and the twenty-four thousand, and that is what you see before you today.
With the possibility of it going away on the next rewrite of the General Plan.
That is a possibility.
Thank you.
No one else? Okay, we will open this up for a public hearing. Would anybody like to come speak on this? You guys are making this easy on me. Going once, okay, hearing. Okay, please. State your name in the microphone.
My name is Julian Baker. And my question is, why are we doing this when we are gonna redo the General Plan in like, very short period of time?
It's a very good question, Will.
That's, that's it. That's, it's maybe a rhetorical question, but that's kind of all I got.
No, that's it, that is a good question. Lori's gonna come up and answer that for you.
Seeking the boss on us now.
So the reason that we're doing this is twofold. One is that we retired the zero-point-one-six. That was the one district that we had that's less than an acre. And so when we retired that, we also had discussion about creating these other districts. So you referred to it as tools in our toolbox. And so we took one tool out, we were going to replace it with other tools. In the UDO Committee, one of their mandates was to actually create these districts. So, so that was my guidance for moving forward and having discussion with you as a team and as the Planning Commission.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anyone else for a public comment? Once, twice? Hearing none, I will close the public hearing and entertain a motion, please.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion to accept the recommended action, approve ordinance twenty-twenty-two dash nine-one-six.
Second.
Motion is second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
All right, motion passes. And Lon, this one is on yours.
Okay, make a motion adjourned.
Second.
We are adjourned. Thank you all.
All right.
I need to just take a pair of glasses here. I think you did pretty good without having any. Except my head hurts, but now you can.